Okay, ready to go? All right, wonderful. Hello, everyone. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, March 14th. We'll officially call this meeting to order. So a quick roll call, I'm gonna just go down this panel here. Charlie Cooper, Director District One, and then Maas District Four.
Hey Larson, District Five, Superintendent Flipperman.
And then online, we have our student representative.
Oh, hi, this is Mr. Representative.
Awesome, thanks, and welcome to all of our guests. I'm so glad that you're here, and we will jump to our welcome message.
So we have some experience with being taken from the previous conversation book. And want to stay engaged, experienced, discover, be vulnerable, speak your truth, expect and accept non-creation. And do a land recognition, we in the federal school district acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, Duamish and Ophish people, past and present, in honor with gratitude, the land itself, and the Duamish and Ophish tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we recognize that Duamish and Ophish people have been living and working here since time and more.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. All right, now we will stand for the flag salute. Which is, if you would like, do or do not have to. Or there's one in the corner there. I fly what regions?
The flag of the United States of America. Is your power what it stands? Winning and under God, individual, the reason, justice, law.
Thank you. All right, so we will move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And so now we are excited to be at Taquilla Elementary. I think the school is going to
Correct, Ms. Principal Noor is going to be having some students and they are going to do a welcome for Taquilla Elementary, so it sounds like they're gathering in the back.
Hello, board. Taquilla Elementary, what we would like to present to you guys, one of who we're really proud of, and one that we really, really were hard on every single day is our morning announcements. And it is run primarily by just our fourth and our third grade students. We're missing one student, so I'm going to be a little late, so Ms. Rice will kind of be the substitute for that. And while they're presenting the new scheme, you're gonna have a slideshow in the background, trying to give you a morning news idea of what Taquilla Elementary is.
Hello, welcome to Taquilla Elementary, and it's Taquilla Tigers, moves are continued.
I'm Hannah.
I'm Eleanor.
And I'm Tania.
We are the morning announcers for our daily news. Today, we would like to share with you information about our experiences as morning announcers and about our robots.
As you watch our slideshow about our school, we would like to show and explain a few things you would like to share. As a TCM announcer, we are a part of an announc, so start to finish. We write, we write the scripts, produce the show, we're in front of the camera, end of the video. My very part of being a morning announcer, making this really funny, because I make a student about breaking the law.
Being an announcer teaches us responsibility, and we are part of the school team.
I just joined the announcing team as a third grade and a month ago, and I'm already
Hannah, I've been learning how to build and program the new Lego site robots.
I created a dancing robot, I created it to be actually the
You want to turn it around, John? Do you have a locker wheel? There's two types of locker wheels.
And keep that a good dancer.
They even leave them.
Yes.
See, I'm learning a program after that, they are teaching me.
Oh, yeah.
No, they don't ever leave them. I'm shocked at that.
In Katia, and we're starting a little robot called the robot. Those are the robot assertions that follow line, but also those people come. All students can use over bot, and the third grade can use code to make a follow-up on it.
So just do not understand these. Very well. You want to tell them how you know the code?
So, this is how we go to code, and it follows by central steps to the bottom. Well, when we get straight here, we came over, but whenever I was really quiet, we like to kind of grow. This is the end of our broadcast for today. Come by anytime, see what amazing thing this poor students are getting involved in classes. We'd like to end by playing my program. I'm the president of the district school, we are the best in our community. We are responsible, we are respectful, we are safe, all the way.
And this is language. With everything that you got to see with our students presenting what we do with our robotics, we also showed you a lot of different things that we have been doing throughout the year. And you're probably wondering with robotics, everything else, with all the FCL, with all the diversity, we have to be doing some kind of activity, right? And we do, all that ultimately comes back in contributes to our daily academic success. So some of the successes we celebrated this year, our second round of I Ready, we had over 170 students that made over 25 point work in I Ready meeting, and I Ready map. Oh, no, isn't I Ready meeting? Woo, you did good. And I Ready map, we had 170 students that made over 25 point work. And overall, we had 270 of our students that won the principal award for 25 points in work in I Ready meeting. For our staff, it didn't end there. For us, our biggest goal this year is how to grow as a school, how to grow as a community, how we change and shift our culture so that we are really focusing on the needs of our students and the need of ourselves in whole cities. So two things that we are doing is we are having a look study for the four pivot. And four things that they're looking on in there that we are having these conversations around are number one, change can be achieved through shallow solutions. The more power we have, the more changes we create. We can strategize solutions for social change and us versus them. Those four lines are lines that we hear all the time and throughout the year are hosted by the end of the year in terms of an understanding of something that actually works for us. Instead of relying on what we presume will obviously make an actual shift in change. As a staff, we've also taken the Harvard implicit by assessment, and we're gathering those results currently, so we can begin unpacking the results to identify some common health items within our schools so that we can make steps to tangible change on things that can actually influence our school. On that note, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to our presentation. Thank you to our students who are up here presenting our robot, and thank you, Lord, for giving them a moment of your time.
Thank you.
Before, before you guys leave, I want to ask, how long did it take you to build those sugar lots?
It took me about a day. This one took a day or two.
Did you pick those particularly ones because you like?
So I quickly wanted to
That's it, yeah.
I think it was like, and put it a lot of it just in the
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's a kind of, I think it's fun. It's open because I wanted, I wondered how a bunch of pieces could make it like move and make music.
Yeah.
They're wonderful, thank you.
Also, I want to point out, when you have the 25 points again, this for the people that know us, that's about a grade level, so, and this is only half the year, and they moved up to about a grade level, and I was looking at some of the I Ready scores, and in some of our, you know, we know the pandemic caused students to get some behind in some levels, and so in Taquilla Elementary, that like, fourth grade and fifth grade, the students that were two or three levels behind, over 50% of them went up one grade level in just half the year. So that's, you know, attending, and then I noticed the fifth, the second graders, over 50% of them went up a full grade level in math. So some really good work, congratulations to the students, the staff, the parents, the support staff for doing some really good work, helping to get them recovering from the pandemic period, so, guys, go.
Thank you. I also just want to commend you and say thank you for your commitment to just crafting culture, right? And supporting that shift in culture here, and the real balance that's evident in the way that you, I've heard you speak before, and the way that's, that's clear here of really balancing the social emotional wellness with the academic and understanding that one really does support the other. So thank you for your continued commitment to those, those things. All right, so we will move now to public comments. So there are several ways to give public comments. If you are joining us online, you can put your name in the chat or raise your hand. And then we do have a in-person public comment, if there's anyone else that would like to sign up, you're welcome to do so here. So we have John Muns offer public comments.
I would, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so John is no longer very public comment, okay? All right, is there anyone else online that would like to provide public comment or anyone else in person? Okay, well, as always, there is opportunity at the end of the meeting to provide public comment. If, as we're moving through tonight's meeting, you hear something, you want to provide input, questions that the board can address at a later time. So we'll move on to our reports, starting with the race and equity update.
So I'll be providing a couple of these today. One was a reflection that we had on the district race and equity committee. That was this afternoon, kind of light attendance. I think there's just a crunch of conflicting activities that many of the building staff at this particular time. But the main crux of that conversation was around district discipline data, and each of the buildings are meeting around kind of how they want to address discipline within the buildings and how do we track that? I believe we've had some conversations and presentations in the past about that, so it's nice that the buildings are each tackling also how to, how they feel the best approach is going to happen, and that's working both with their race and equity teams and their hope teams, which we talked about before. So there's continuing dialogue around that, and the crux of that conversation was about how we can explore good opportunities of supporting adults with some of the changes that need to happen, not just always focusing on the students, so that is very productive conversation. And we did have people from high school, middle school, and elementary there, it's just not each of the buildings. The other is around some upcoming trainings that we have. I've mentioned before about the cultural responsive school leadership training that we have happening out of state in May, so I talked to the Puget Sound DSD about that and got some further clarification, so just kind of working on some logistics and I'll write a memo out. We have three school teams that are interested in going, I think it's going to be a good opportunity. Additionally, Puget Sound DSD is also sponsoring some additional professional development opportunities that I think can involve a broader audience. That's from National Equity Project based out of Oakland. And that will be, I think it's either virtual or it will be at the Puget Sound DSD, and it looks like there are going to be two, three sessions for that, three different dates. One will be in late June, and then there'll be two dates in August. So they're just getting the logistics up and ready for that. So as soon as I get more details about that, I'll certainly let people know, we'll figure out how we can get that out to more people. And then the last piece is around some upcoming meetings in the next few weeks with Puget Sound DSD, talking about the progress we've been making over the last year or two, and kind of the pathway that they see for us in the future, without nailing down too many things, I want to make sure we have good dialogue with everybody around that. So those are upcoming in the next week or two with Puget Sound DSD. A couple of years ago, we had kind of put together a three-year timeline and package of what they could do to support us and how we thought we could work collaboratively together. So this is going to be a review of what they have been seeing from us, including with our facilitators, doctors, Roger Jarred and Christopher Kenhausen. So looking forward to that as well, and giving an update, probably as well, I don't know a little bit.
And my one question, I think I have is around the race and recruiting in the district, is this one data that they're looking at? What data were they?
They didn't actually look at any data today. They were talking about the reporting mechanism, like the discipline data, the discipline referral form, and just some conversation about that, and then how that data is going to be collected and how we can interpret that and use that, and so I think there's ongoing dialogue about the particular form.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will they be given access once the discipline data report per the WAC is ready? Will they be given that so that they can also kind of reflect on that?
Yeah, so there's that data that we, that gets reported to the state, but then there's additional data. I think we have referenced that before, between kind of like major and minor referrals. So we also want to make sure we're looking at some of the minor referrals that don't necessarily get reported to the state. So yes, we want to look at pretty big, if there are larger incidences that we need to report to the state, but also the smaller incidences that kind of interact and result in students losing any instructional time or class time. So I think it's good to have dialogue around both of those items to see, you know, how many things we need to address if we're seeing pattern. So I think it's informative about those major, larger incidences, the ones we report according to the WAC. Not why the owl keeps moving. Yeah. So that's where I have on the
Questions? Okay, then we'll move to the legislative report.
So let me give an update on a few things. First of all, the two recess bills that are floating through that require us to go from 15 minutes of recess in elementary schools to 30 minutes. Those look like they're going to go. The one thing, they originally started at 45 minutes, it's kind of back to 30 minutes, and you only have to start in 24, 25, so that would mean that we wouldn't have to open contracts or anything, because we'd be just doing that naturally, so I think they're, I think they're good bills at this point. 30 minutes is definitely, I mean, we talked about recess here before, and 15 minutes really isn't enough for elementary students, so so going to 30 would be a good thing to do anyway, and I think both of them will probably, or one of them will win out, and but they're both exactly the same, so pretty sure that will pass this year. We've started to get into season where some bills are dying because they aren't advancing in the, in the process. I've listed some of the ones that have died there. Lots of discussion still on the special education bills. The school association is pushing heavily, the 5311, which is the Senate bill, which is the better of the two, because it increases, it's called the multiplier, which how much, it's how much you get for each special education student by significantly more than the House bill is. And so we'll see how that one goes through. I added a few at the bottom that I think are interesting to us. 50 Senate bill, 5617 is, is threatening OSBI to expand course equivalency for skills center courses. So we send a lot of our, or some of our students, so we do the Puget Sound Skill Center, and this would allow more of those courses to get to the point where they could be used for basic core high school credits, which would be helpful for a lot of students, I think, so I think that's a good bill. The second one there is 1732, which is changing how the, how we calculate the inflation factors for salaries. It used to be, and what is now is, we kind of take, or the state kind of takes a guess at what it's going to be in the next year, and then, and then they get adjusted for what it actually is. And that makes, that makes budgeting a little hard for us, because we have to take that guess and then adjust it. What this bill would do would be basically saying, you're going, next year you're going to get whatever the inflation factor was the previous year. And that adds more certainty to the budgeting, of course. It's advantageous for salaries if inflation is going down, because then you look backwards, which is higher. On the other hand, when inflation is going up, then you're going backwards, and it's less, but over the long term, I think it, it kind of improves things, assuming we can do it every year, because it will provide more certainty into what the, what the number will be. That one is going through, I think, yeah, it's already passed the House, I think, and they spoke in the Senate. The next one, 1550 is an interesting one, transitional kindergarten, so we don't The more likely it is, we're going to be able to in some school districts, but it's, looks like it's gonna, they're working hard at it, so we'll likely get it. See, 5031 should help us, so right now, when we have special students that cost a lot of extra money, it's not covered by the state, we get there in this thing called safety net, which at the end of the year, we kind of put all the excess funds and try and get, we don't, we typically don't get all of it, but we get some of it. And this bill would basically change and say, no, we're going to give you the money rather than at the end of the year, we're going to give it to you quarterly as it goes through the year, so that should help a little bit with, with the budget stuff. We'll see how that comes out, but anyway, that's as an attempt to, to provide some of that money, so thanks. Because we have cash flows frequently, I mean, this year we had to do some transferring of money between funds because of the cash flows. It's not that we don't have it, it's just in a particular month, we may be low, and then we have to come back up, so anyway, this one sounds like it probably should go. And then this other one, 5462 is an interesting one. It's kind of blowing up in the red, red parts of the state. There's already, you know, built requirements when you There's already, you know, built requirements when you for inclusive curriculum. So the curriculum has to include, you know, kind of representation for all the different students and different groups can change. So they want to add LGBTQ to that list, you know, all the racial groups and and like I said, that one's kind of blowing up in the red part of the, because they're arguing kind of, no, this is local control. We should be able to decide that it's not at a state level. The interesting thing about that argument is basically the same argument that when the civil rights thing was going on in the sixties, the states that didn't want to you know, incorporate civil rights in their, in their laws, were arguing state rights that the state should have their hands to do it. And this is really, you know, it's, it'll be interesting. This is kind of, I mean, I view this as a civil right, not a state, not a local control issue. And so anyway, that's the legislature will be wrestling with that one. I suspect it's already passed the Senate, it will pass. And so anyway, that's interesting one. So I think it's good. So we'll see how that plays out at the end of the, end of the day when it goes in. So that's my report for legislative.
We have Lenny or IT guy again, yes, please. Lenny hopefully offers some tech support. Our owl keeps moving. Lenny, are you there?
Yes, hello.
You had your hand raised?
I have my hand raised. I was just checking on the audio here. And I see that a couple of times it's gone out. But it looks like Flip, he either has a visual to see that if the audio goes out, he can turn it back on. I just want to confirm that.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That's all I, that's, that's all I have. Yep.
Technology is so weird. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Larson, for the update on legislative. All right, so now I'm going to approve our consent agenda. All right, so now moving to the board discussion, which is, this is, I think, an extension of the discussion from last meeting around just kind of how certain duties will be divided while I am taking some time away. I'm not sure who wants to assume that's the one we all want to talk over.
Sure, I can talk a little bit about that. So we did talk, I did send out something to all board directors about what I thought might be a good division of duties without having to reconstitute any positions on the board. So the board is amenable to that. It was to have Director Larson run the board meetings. Director Morris attend the agenda setting meetings and Director Bolljack to be the communication lead for the board, any communication needs to happen with either incoming emails or anything else. So all very temporary, of course. Doesn't require any changing of official voted on positions or board organization or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine for me. And you know, whenever, if you do decide you want to come back, that's fine too. Whenever, you know, kind of period, but that's fine. I can do that, yeah.
And I know Jen volunteered last time, so I'm assuming that is fine. Wonderful, awesome. Thank you for your support, everyone. Your best. Very cute baby. All right, so we'll move down to our questions only presentations. So the first one is the early learning reports. Are there additional questions on this one?
So I guess what I'm.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, appreciate answers. But what I'm trying to figure out is if we need to do some, some planning or you're indicating here, it looks like we're gonna need two more classrooms probably.
So we're gonna give them a number of students to serve our part day programs and we're gonna maintain the same number of students.
How to negotiate the space issue because as we know, special ed is I mean, there's operational, but then you gotta have space and that space is fairly specialized. It's not just any old space.
Yeah, these spaces need kitchenette. So I think we've identified one possible state that runs our schools that will be able to reach that.
And I hope it also kind of expanded thing outside because I think the let's shake her has in mind, you know, this kind of a community thing. So in other words, if we could talk to the city, they might have some space or whoever else, you know, we could find space. I mean, I'm still eyeing fire station fifty-two sitting over there doing nothing would be a great spot for if we could convince them, you know, but anyway, I hope in your planning, because you're kind of thinking, I mean, yes, inside this school district, but also anybody you might reach out to.
Yes, and then as we look to kind of having a ball.
Right, right.
So trying to find a cross group. Help us think of where we want to go and then we can see.
Yeah, because there's, I mean, Ecap is, by my understanding, is a fairly low income level and there's probably a whole, in this community, there's probably a whole lot of people like just.
Every single five's water and a pay fall by the verge income level. And you'll notice that are way less for the income eligible students are pretty large. They're also, they're harsh enough to be.
Yeah.
The head start eligibility is actually much easier. They automatically would fall by the head start.
Right.
There's some more slots that, that eligible people didn't get in the first place. So there's more slots for Ecap starters to fall by more, there's.
Right. Yeah, did, I don't know, did you answer this? Let's see.
Yeah, number seven. I think for me, I'm just sitting and like, how do we figure out how to serve those students with, but you know, I mean, that's a, you know, a future plan of what the budget implications would be for, for certain students and we would have that, that planning to do so.
Yeah, it comes to your point, you don't get any C, right, I'm sure, see, very bad design for kids, maybe.
Yeah, because the other, in the long, also in the longer term, this I think is one of the strategies in terms of increasing enrollment. You get them young and hopefully they stay with it. So yeah, so that's great. I'm glad you're, yeah, doing the, thinking about it in the in the ball and figure out those things because there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts in this and that's a really important thing. So thanks.
Thank you always for the detailed report. Okay, next is the food service update. Thanks for the incredibly just colorful and vibrant presentation.
So one of the things I'm interested in, so looking at the, the data, it looks like about maybe sixty percent of our students are, are taking lunch. So, so then the question is, you know, what's, what's going on with the other forty percent? Given that it's a free one, and so is there thirty thousand, I assume if we could get, you know, if we could bump that sixty percent up to seven scale, that subsidy might just disappear.
Well, I feel like we could, there is definitely potentially increase our participation. Yeah, well, the big gaps I see is our high school. There's a lot of students, they campus and the farm stores and stuff like that. I believe one of my leads will try to time about sixty kids per, period. So our elementary I think I have a decrease in enrollment a little bit, so I didn't talk about eating budget currently on what we're assuming for which. But I think I'm going to try to catch most high school students. That's why I did my first student survey there, was trying to find out reasons why there wasn't even, that they weren't fully eaten at school.
So did you get any insights?
Not really.
I'm curious about that. Was it like, what kind of survey was like a one to five kind of survey or?
A lot of it was, there was, there was scale on some of it. There's also specific questions like eating lunch or breakfast, yes and no.
Okay.
And then I was standing there with them and trying to get feedback.
Yeah.
But interesting, a lot of them were more options, which our high school serves a lot of options. To try to like capture their ethnic groups.
Okay, yeah.
Which actually got a lot of good feedback also at the same time. So it's like a lot of the feedback was why would you want, well, you want to see more, they said they don't know. Okay, so. I mean, try this. Some of them, you know, we have like a create station, that's a lot of options to change every day. So have you done that on there? Oh, well, if you try.
So far, maybe just those. Yeah, I just, I just mentioned kind of, yeah, exploring that area and how we increase, I mean, after all, it is free to them. So.
Yeah, I'm gonna see a lot more of the increase when it's free for everybody, but.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, I hope you can still. Like there's a lot of interesting at the, even at the elementary schools.
Food booth is super fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to get kids a little more interested in how food can help them by eating it. So.
Yeah.
Right.
Trying to get a little more excited about it, but profit. We try.
Students can do cooking or culinary classes. Is that through the skills center? Or is that a path fostered?
Both.
Okay. Do they ever do anything and sort of like serve things that they?
Uh, no. There's a, a couple of questions about them using the kitchen to prepare. I'm saying their classroom. But I have a little bit of a question overall about can we do something in our interview. I program them.
I think sometimes with young people, like the more involved, they can see an actual like doing of the thing. Might get more feedback, like might be versus just asking them in the service, like asking them to give them feedback. But I understand what just the mood that would probably be really difficult.
I did hear that one of the teachers actually has like a social systems forum or a little committee on their own, any teacher involved or whatever, so there's about Mr. Marcha, I believe, at high school. What's these hearings from the students? So they check again. And see, I actually saw the time to go sit with this student.
Student was talking about is food composting, so they get access to food composting somewhere and that kind of thing. And so yeah, the more you know, to a degree, the more students can get involved in whatever level is reasonable, then I can kind of spread around. Go through kitchen remodel is done. Yeah, all happening this summer.
Actually happening hopefully is all quickly to do for students.
Okay. So what is, in fact, do you think that's going to have on the overall program? Yeah.
Well, a lot of the equipment is like thirty years old, so I'm hoping it'll just, it doesn't matter. It's higher for kids. It's new, so I want to be involved. Which shows absolutely that it's made it a little bit more inviting, I guess. So better food, hotter food. I mean, they'll just all keep it, like, probably we're serving our sandwich bars out of the Canada plastic, so it'll maintain food quality a lot better.
And so you're going to do a survey as well because.
Yeah, I did do a survey of those. Well, I did one last year, made to re-tweet their questions, maybe to be a little more for their grade level. Because that's what they're asking, whether like lobster or steak. And I think I'm gonna try to go on, I'm just a level as well, I really. At that level, maybe like an hour of sale question, maybe maybe perhaps the teaching run during the practice program, like we find all the habits, see.
Right.
There are a lot of programs out there that, you know, come into the classroom and can you promote those? Well, they come into the classroom, they help the children, you know, stuff. Promote those. I know we've done those in the past and I'll switch base with her. And also I'd like to commend your staff, they you know, teaching the schools and your staff work. They're trying to make breakfast. Very common, so thank you.
So do we, this is still, this probably isn't your program with the fruits and vegetables snacks at elementary schools? Is that you wish you had that? Okay, and that's still going on. I, I thought I knew what's going on, that's good viewing story night, but.
All three schools have a project.
Okay, all three, which is another great way to kind of introduce students to healthy foods.
Yeah. It's an interesting year for produce quality though, so having it around, creating, spend all of those more expensive stuff.
Yeah.
So yeah. Then maybe as far as I was, essentially, I was still be more excited, I said, I get all the advice and burning, I was there. Yeah, so yeah, so we still do that every day.
Same here, right? Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Just want to apologize and name that the owl continues to mute itself. We now have two people who are sitting here and muting it as we go along. So I'm deeply sorry for the folks that are online. Just bear with us and we'll hope that we can get this figured out for next meeting. Okay, so we'll move now to the presentation for the budget process preview for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
So I pretty much have a one pager in the order. So this is the way I gave outline kind of the difference that they kind of get us where we need to go, right? And so part of the budget process is to review the board.
And so part of the budget process is to review the board budget priorities. We that document amongst other things as part of our budget advisory committee. This year, I believe there are five meetings that we are having. Our first one starts tomorrow. And then within this document, I also outline some of our H R deadlines. So we can kind of get a good visual of how everything falls into line. In the past, we tried to be proactive, meaning we tried to pass our budget in July when we have our one meeting. It's never that aware of happened in July. And so I just basically put in contingencies to basically have the budget approved the first August meeting. We have pushed out that far. If we have to, there's there's room in this outline.
I think the first question is related to, and you've done this in the past, I know, kind of going out to some student groups and and different outside of, I mean, you have the kind of get some some students and some parents, which you've had, you know, sometimes a lot of something, but are you still finding? I know, I think you went to the last student union last year and
Yes.
some other whatever student groups you can find.
So I have for the first meeting, I have not had a chance to go to the different groups.
Yeah.
What I did is I kind of looked at kind of what we did last year and kind of say, hey, spread the word. Like, for example, Chris, we're at dinner. I see, you know, he said he listened, he's not able to attend tomorrow, I said, hey, spread the word. Let everybody kind of know that this they were parents, what I found is usually within the first or second meeting, people start to fall off. I'm not sure why. I don't think on that form. Presentation this year, I use more friendly language, more pictures, more diagrams, things to make it more inviting. And then I'm kind of relating certain things to, for example, like maybe a personal budget with a school budget, what does that look like? What was the purpose? You know, how do you get your revenue? You know, you work, you know, forty hours, what are your expenses? Think of that, make it more user friendly and kind of paint that whole picture in a more friendlier way than this whole bunch of budget jargon.
Yes, yeah. The other question, so where are in our board parties, we've been kind of, we're in mid midstream on that. I don't know which.
So I believe that that it is that I believe it's on the board meeting for the the next board meeting. We improve, I know that we're still doing some manipulations to it.
Yeah. Okay.
But I believe it's supposed to be going for who at the second board meeting this month, but I believe it uh, number two for the second one. Worst case scenario, if it's not available at the time, then
Yeah.
I can always move it to the nineteen, so it's kind of flexibility
Okay.
within the different meetings.
Okay.
So I think one of these, thanks for this detailed timeline. I always appreciate it. It helps keep my brand organized as well and understanding. I think this just brings up something to me when kind of the larger conversation we've been having about what kind of the ways that we're engaging community or trying to engage community. And often sometimes the barriers we get to really getting the engagement that we would like, I think ideally, or what what kind of prevents books from getting involved. And, you know, and I think there's a, we talked a lot about what it would look like to really go to vote. Go to the spaces where they already are, communities already are, versus asking them to come to, you know, a meeting. And so I'm wondering if, you know, and maybe it's not for for this particular budget cycle, but holistically, what would it look like to engage community in that more direct way? And I think about it with a, and that should start with developing the board budget priorities as well. So, you know, I I think that, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of things that we kind of need to know why from the community around. From all the way from running as a to be a board director to, you know, why they don't show up for a budget meeting or why, you know, they don't eat in the school cafeteria, right? There's so many whys that I think we have to answer. And so I really wanted to figure out how we can start to get even more creative around that. And that's not for you particularly, Miss Bertson, around this, but as a district, how can we really start to do that? But I think the budget. Nobody likes to talk about it, but it's our taxpayers', you know, money, right? And and so how can we figure out continuously how to engage them in a way that's really meaningful? Yeah, so just just some random thoughts that I've thought mulling around and, yeah.
I think the what what has elicited, I think, in the past not enough is the board parties, but they tend to be less a little less gargony, a little less numery, if you will, which, so I think, yeah, if we kind of focus on that and maybe that. And then it's always been used as kind of the starting, one of the starting points. And so, but now it's a matter of looking at, you know, getting out a little bit more. We can figure out, you know, different places to different, you know, whether it's P K A and so forth. I mean, the parent advisory group would be another group that could, you know, we have in existence that could ask, you know, provide some good input.
Thank you. I'll tell you, any other questions? Great, thanks. Uh, okay, so now we move to our action items. So the first action on the table is approval of a human resources staffing report.
Seven.
All in favor? I. Second is approval of the purchase of new desktop computers, the elementary schools' creative learning labs. So that on favor. And then approval of a safety and inclusion task force extension.
Seven.
Seven, all in favor? And then last approval of the policy number two four zero one, financial education mastery based learning and credit. So, all in favor? Okay. For public comment. About the tech, you can still give it and we know, anyway. If you would like to provide public comment, you can do so by raising your hand or typing your name in the chat. If there's anyone here. All right, well, then we will move to adjourn the meeting.